November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, Planning Commission Regular Session Meeting. Today we have first the, on our agenda, approval of a minutes for October the eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. Do I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the October eighteenth, two thousand seventeen Regular Session Minutes.
And second?
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? No abstentions. It's a four zero vote. Uh, we also have the minutes for November first, two thousand seventeen Regular Session. Do I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the meeting of November first, twenty seventeen, a regular session.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, records show that it's four zero, uh, approval of the minutes of November first, two thousand seventeen. Uh, we don't, I believe we do not have any record plaques today.
That's correct.
So we go right into the, uh, and no consent items, so we'll go right into the sign permit. Uh, Jasmine, can you please, oh, before I go, I'll let you make sure, make one, some brief announcement. Alternate Commissioner Phil Wessel, uh, Wessel is joining us on the dais and participate this evening as not all commissioners are present. Thank you.
Good evening. So staff is before you present three sign applications for the ninety-nine Ranch Market located at one-ten Odenhall Avenue. You can see here in our aerial, um, this property, um, is accessible from North Frederick Avenue and Odenhall Avenue. Um, so this is the former Sports Authority Building, uh, so they left and now the Ninety-Nine Ranch Market is taking their place. Uh, so the signs are coming before the Planning Commission because all three of the signs are over one hundred square feet. In section, uh, twenty-four dash two twelve C one, uh, the totals of signs of any building, except in the RB, CBD, and CD zone shall not exceed ten percent of the total square footage of the sods of the building holding the signs, and shall have a maximum square feet, uh, square of, uh, one hundred square feet. Uh, signage is only limited to those signs, uh, oh, oh, sorry, signage is only limited to those sides of the building that face a public street or have a public entrance unless approved by the Planning Commission. And also the sign contains a, a laurel wreath, which is considered an icon sign. And in pursuant to section twenty-four dash two twelve J, icon signs must be approved by the Planning Commission. And part of your packet, the applicant has submitted a justification letter for those three signs. And so I'm gonna go through each one, so sign A. Uh, so this is gonna be, um, approximately two hundred and seventy-five square feet and will be located directly above the main entrance. Uh, in accordance to the ten percent of the building facade, this, uh, side is allowed to have eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet of signage. And, um, they're also kind of, uh, replacing, or placing the signs, uh, where the Sports Authority signs used to be. And a Sports Authority was approved to have a sign that was two hundred and seventy square feet, so they're kind of fitting in within this square on the building facade. Uh, sign B, uh, is on the northeast elevation of the building. Uh, so this sign is gonna be approximately two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. Uh, for this facade, the building's allowed to have four hundred and thirty-four square feet. The staff had also noticed, according to our code, this sign really doesn't face a public entrance or a public right-of-way. But in the applicant's statement, they mentioned, you know, they're replacing what was there before, Sports Authority had a sign there and you can kind of see it on Russell Avenue, so they believe they can have that sign there. Um, and also, here's what the sign looks like for the Sports Authority. And then the last sign is, uh, sign C, and this sign is visible from the public entrance off of North Frederick Avenue. So this sign's gonna be approximately one hundred and twelve square feet. It will be located on the southwest elevation of the building. For this building facade, the, uh, they're allowed to have four hundred and forty-three square feet. And the former Sports Authority, their sign was kind of less than a hundred square feet, but it was ninety-four square feet, so, um, did, uh, I do have the advocate here if you have any questions.
Jasmine, could you just, for the public's knowledge, could you tell us what ninety-nine Ranch Market is, what they?
Uh, it's almost like a grocery store, um, that sells mostly Asian foods. Um, also with, we've just found out within the market, they also have like other additional tenants in, within there. They'll make, make, um, actual food there.
I think it's a great reuse of a big box store that, uh, is sitting empty and I, we don't need any more of those empty stores around. And I think it's great that this is available and that the applicant is going to make good use of it. And, uh, something we could use in the neighborhood as well.
Something we don't have.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, any, do you have any, any comments, man? Does the applicant want to add anything?
No, she did a wonderful job. Thank you, as always.
Any, uh, members of the, uh, panel?
No, I mean, I think, I don't have any, uh, any concerns. By and large, with the exception of, it looked like one of them, all of these signs are pretty much identical in size to the existing signage and one was, you know, not that much larger, so I have no, I have no issues. I think as far as, uh, visibility from where the streets are and where the traffic are, it makes a lot of sense to have the larger sign, so I have no concerns.
Jasmine, can you sum up, please?
Sure. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report, findings and recommendation grant, sign dash one five three oh five, uh, dash two thousand seventeen, sign dash one five three oh six dash seven seventeen, and sign dash one five three oh seven dash two thousand seventeen. Ninety-nine Ranch Market finding in compliance with section twenty-four dash two twelve of the city, um, sign ordinance.
Any further discussion on the panel? No?
I would interject real quick. Um, you may want to ask the audience if there's anyone who would like to speak on this application.
Anybody in the audience who'd like to speak? See, no one. Uh, do I have a motion then from the, uh, any commissioners?
Sure. Mister Vice Chair, and current, and Acting Chair, the, I move that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report findings and recommendations grant, sign one five three zero five dash two zero one seven, sign one five three zero six dash two zero one seven, and sign one five three zero seven dash two zero one seven, finding it in conformance with section twenty-four dash two one two of the city code with zero conditions.
Out of the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show four zero on the vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, next, uh, is going to be presented's recommendation to the Mayor and City Council for changes to chapter twenty-four of the city code to address small cell facilities in public rights of way. Uh, Frank, our National Counsel.
Yeah, yes, um, you do have a memo and of course the ordinance and lots of the other information. This, uh, the ordinance changes were part of really a, a three-part approach that's been going on over the last uh, couple of months and actually the whole small cell, uh, consideration's been probably over more than a two-year period, partly because of new technology in terms of how wireless facilities, um, get the data and get the ability for us to link into, uh, uh, to wireless and wifi and all of that available. Uh, particularly, you know, as they will say with many people having, uh, well, I'm sitting here with a cellphone, which is certainly turned off, uh, iPad and all that. Now, they're not, they're not all connected, but we are depending more and more on that, on using the, uh, wifi and using wireless communication and getting those connections and that's calling, for much more from the, uh, from the infrastructure. So, um, what we're talking about, um, in terms of the regulations, that's never really not before you. That's something that's going to have an impact on the, uh, public rights of way. However, there are changes to other parts of the city code that go in concert along with chapter twenty-four. What I'm gonna talk about is primarily chapter twenty-four, but just so that you have the sense that there's a lot of other things going on as well and the idea, uh, as we have done before, for instance with bonding, if you remember that, uh, over a year ago, is to try to make sure that we have some consistent standards in place where it's relevant to do so. Um, so in any event, uh, these, uh, these changes and allowing additional sites, um, have come about regarding wireless communications and what are known as distributed antenna systems. In many cases, the antennas themselves are fairly small. And some of the discussion is, we're just adding them to the top of the pole, who's going to notice? Well, there are also equipment boxes in order for those antenna to operate. And then the question, some of them can be fairly large, at least compared to an antenna. And they may need to be placed separately and there can be a question of where, how are they going to be positioned and what are we gonna allow? So they can raise a number of concerns, um, not exclusively, but certainly in residential areas. Particularly where some firms may come in and say, well, the street poles you have are for streetlights only and they're simply too small for us to operate, so we want to replace those with something larger. Or there's no pole at all and we want to put a pole up. The issue is, what do our ordinances have in place that will allow this in, in an orderly way, also comply with Federal Communications Commission's requirements? Because in some cases, where there are very minor changes, we have a very short timeline that we have to operate. Well, if this would otherwise, say, be subject to a special exception, have to come here for a recommendation, then to the board, getting something done within a sixty or ninety day timeframe is next to impossible to do, also getting notice out. So, in any event, talking about some overall concerns, appearances, um, allowing and encouraging what are known as stealth installations, which are the ones that, they're not invisible, but they're not as noticeable. They blend, uh, uh, fairly well. And then, of course, dealing with size, safety, uh, and then having consistent and fair permitting processes. So, um, in terms of, um, our rights of way, just in term, you know, just for overall background, we don't apply zoning to the rights of way. Many jurisdictions do, Montgomery County does, we do not. As a result, installations have, of anything, have been a matter of discretion, um, pretty much of the city manager or the city council. There aren't any specific permitting processes, there really aren't any standards, and all of those we need. So we have about a, an eighty-some page set of regulations laying out for everything. All installations, whether it be, uh, any utility at all, even including excavations, what these rules are going to be. Again, that's background. The several amendments are to the city code chapters nineteen, twenty, and twenty-four. Twenty-four is what we're here about tonight. And, um, the main thing is to make a lot of the changes to the right-of-way subject to those city rules and regs that I had mentioned. Um, the amendment that we're talking about tonight would make some changes to further define rights of way and more broad telecommunications facilities, clarify zoning and installation requirements for all these facilities, uh, whether they're considered small cell, which actually in terms of definition comes out because, just because of changing technology. Two years ago, small cell was what you would say, that changes very quickly. Um, it's even possible that some of the ordinance changes we make over the next several weeks may end up having to be changed down the road as well. In terms of the context of what's going on with the FCC, that may also require some changes, but we expect that the bulk of the changes may be required to the regulations. If that's the case, the regulatory changes may be a bit more expeditious to make because while the city council has used a public hearing, they're not required to do it. And if there's something, if we have a federal requirement that we have to comply with, that can be a fairly easy way to, um, to operate. But in terms of, um, uh, what we're talking about tonight, which is CTAM seven six six five, two oh, two thousand seventeen, the changes to chapter twenty-four, um, these are, uh, the amendments basically ensure that there's a level of consistency between, uh, nineteen and twenty, nineteen dealing with roads, twenty dealing with subdivisions, and then, uh, chapter twenty-four. You will also see somewhat towards the end of, um, uh, section one sixty-seven A, some special rules permitting staff approvals. Well, that's part of what I'm talking about, in terms of the stealth installations that, um, first of all, could apply where, uh, there is a need for the service, meaning that otherwise the service can't be provided. We do have some restrictions on prohibiting, uh, the service in that case. If we have rules and regulations that do not allow the service to be provided, that's a flat violation of the FCC rules. That could certainly subject the city to, uh, part of it is not only subjecting the city to liability, but could end up with, um, uh, an installation being able to proceed just as proposed without our input, without concerns, not only for appearance, but safety and some, and some other, uh, related concerns as well. So, in any event, those changes ensure we can meet the FCC requirements for expeditious and consistent review, depending on category and type. Right now, the current city code doesn't specify requirements or processes that are applicable, uh, or have minimum requirements even for rights of way. The proposed amendments, um, again, as I've said, would ensure a consistent approach and consistent requirements for proposed installations. There are changes to the definitions, uh, section twenty, twenty-four one. As I've mentioned, in some cases, taking out references to small cell, but using, uh, first of all, referring to definitions that are now in FCC rules and regulations, but also reflecting more current technology. There are some changes to, um, references to, uh, structures used for transmission of radio and television signals as reception antenna. Again, for the same reason, to reflect current technology. There are some, um, references to make sure that the city's height limitations, um, have to be satisfied for approval. Uh, there are some clarifying amendments, uh, in dealing with approval of these facilities, ensuring that requirements address antennas, equipment, and related facilities. And that antennas may also be installed on towers as well as monopoles. Requirements for public property are also referenced, um, again, along with installations meeting, uh, city regulations requirements, which are referenced in chapters nineteen and twenty as well. Proposed amendments to, uh, to subsection E, getting down towards the end, uh, would add new requirements for concealed small facilities, meeting very specific size limitations. Those are the ones that can be approved by staff. They are very small. You would have seen one cubic feet, tho- those are very small. Uh, but that is what would meet our definition to, again, we don't have that now. That would allow a fairly quick approval and again, not run afoul of those deadlines. There are a few new subsections that, um, uh, again, uh, reflect allowing the, uh, staff approvals, but, um, uh, also requires, I'd mentioned earlier, that applicants show they would otherwise be prohibited from providing the service at all. I'm not sure that we're really in that situation now because of what, what the FCC now requires, um, in terms of showing no, uh, no available service at all. But if they do meet that definition, we need to have our ordinance in place that does allow us to, uh, to address it. And it's certainly possible that those standards will change as there's more and more use of these facilities. There's also techno- uh, discussion of technology changing and moving to five G, which may even require, at least according to the industry, number, larger numbers of even smaller installations. But the specifics of that are not quite out because we're still talking about a technology that's not yet in place. So, um, in any event, that is, um, that is the ordinance that is before you for your recommendation in terms of processes. Obviously, the city council will be, uh, reviewing, staff and, and city council as well will be reviewing the, um, input that has been received. And there haven't been dramatic changes, uh, or a large number of comments made. Um, I think part of that was, there was a lot of interaction both with citizens and with business and in review of a number of other drafts, both in putting together the ordinance and in, uh, and in the related regulations and the changes to the other chapters as well. Um, and in going through that, uh, it may be that a lot of the initial comments have been over the last couple of years. But, um, but in any event, that is, um, that is what's before you. And obviously, the staff recommendation, uh, is for a recommendation of the, um, uh, ordinance as proposed. And again, that's CTAM seven six six five, two thousand seventeen.
Thanks, Frank. A couple of weeks ago, maybe two months ago, actually, uh, we had a, an applicant from Crown Farm come in. And they wanted to put some stealth technology, I believe, on the roof of the high-rise buildings at Crown. Does this impact, or is this as a result of that application? We had some discussion about the architecture and the way the stealth technology would be situated on the roof and how that fit in with the architecture of the, of the building itself. But does this apply now to that technology?
This would work with that, um, and certainly encourage it. Uh, there are installations on, um, in stealth manners on outside, on, on buildings now, um, in private areas, that with the change, some changes that were made a couple of years ago that are now permitted, that have actually gone through the process and have actually been here for a recommendation and then been to the board. And that, that, as I recall, would be somewhat similar in that line. It would, you have to look at the exact zoning, of course, as to what's allowed, but more than likely, it would fall under, it may even fall under the rules that are in place. But the rules here would continue to encourage that and essentially set up more consistent standards across the board.
And are the cell towers that currently exist, the large cell towers that were originally put in ten, fifteen years ago, uh, that technology, is that going away now or is, are those going to be utilized with the new stealth technology? And if so, uh, do you expect that we'll have more cell towers coming in? Cause I know a lot of citizens were very upset when they saw those cell towers go up over the years.
Sure. Um, it seems from what we're, again, this is based on what we're hearing from the industry and how I interpret technology, um, as well, which, uh, um, we will, we will do our best. You'd almost wanna maybe go to a commercial now where I can, but we're not on commercial TV, so I can't do that. But, um, generally, as, as I'd said with five G, that seems to be happening because right now what we're dealing with, the technology is called four G. Uh, in any event, it, it's not a matter of necessarily putting up the large poles as much as increasing the capacity that those existing poles already provide. That is the language that we have heard. The point is more of a need for the, um, uh, for the smaller, you know, technology. And what they're, again, what they're saying is with the next round, um, that the actual equipment and the antennas may be smaller, but the issue there may be the need for more of them. So, part of the concern from some of the neighbors has been, as I've, as I've said, now, if you don't have a lot of, uh, for instance, if you're downtown and for, talking about, uh, some folks with Baltimore City, where they already have a number of light poles there, adding an antenna or equipment to an existing light, an existing very large light pole.
Yeah.
A light tower like we would have out on, uh, for instance, Money Branch Road or on, uh, Frederick Avenue, is not going to have quite the same concern. If it's in a, in a commercial area, that may also have rather large poles, it may not. But if you're in a residential area, pretty much built after nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-one, they tend not to have the old telephone poles, they tend not to have the Pepco poles. They may have a couple of fairly small streetlights.
Yeah.
Uh, and no major utility poles because they're all undergrounded. And then when you have telecommunications coming in to say, well, we want to put several poles up, all where there are none now, some of which may be in front of somebody's house or at least seen from somebody's house, is what raises the concern. Per even current FCC rules, it's not a matter of us being able to necessarily say no in every case, but we can certainly take some steps to direct it and try to limit that. And that's what, that's a large part of what this is all about.
Go ahead. Frank, I was just gonna ask and want to clarify that my understanding is correct. The requirements for telecommunications facilities on, outside of the right-of-way on private property to be either stealth or not stealth, that's specific to the individual zone requirements, correct? That's not part of what these regulations are, that would say, you know, the, within the CD zone requirements, it would say that all telecommunications facility shall be stealthed or something along those lines, correct? Or am I misunderstanding that?
Well, uh, they may reference to the standards that are here, if they're in there. So the, the, these probab- if they are allowed, um, in a zone and, and in many they would be, these would be the, the rules that would generally be referenced.
Cause what I'm, what I'm getting at is I'm reading through this and trying to understand, if I'm gonna, if I'm a private property owner and I have, and I want to lease space on the top of my building to one of these telecommunications providers, am I required to make it a stealth facility outside of, other than a historic district? That's the only requirement I see in these, in this amendment, is that it clarifies that historic districts must be stealthed. But outside of that, a facility on private property outside of the right-of-way, it doesn't, I don't get any clarity from this on whether it's required to be stealth or not.
It doesn't mandate that each one has to be, but there are visual appearance requirements that would apply. Um, it may not necessarily have to be invisible, but it does need to be consistent with the area. It does, not overly obtrusive, and there are some specific size limitations. Now, because of the equipment, it may or may, may not be possible to be stealth in some areas. But yes, you're correct, in the historic area, there certainly is an additional requirement on top of the standards that are already in place, that there, that they certainly be stealthed, and that's certainly encouraged.
Yeah.
When they are stealth, though, there is an additional, there are additional possibilities that the FCC regs, as they are currently, rules and regulations, I should say, as they are currently, uh, do allow for a bit of a quicker approval process. So it's certainly encouraged.
But not, but not required. So there's nothing to prevent a commercial landowner or commercial building owner from allowing someone to bolt a bunch of antenn- antennas on this, on the roof as, or on the facade of their building, as long as they meet the size requirements.
They're gonna have to meet the requirements, uh, that are in here in some cases, that there, there may be, depending on what's being proposed, again, depending on the specifics. Um, it may be that there will have to be a public hearing, it may be that a special exception, depending on the zone. It, you know, it may be that there'd be some processes even here. But, um, but they would have to meet the requirements in order for that to proceed. And there are some pretty fairly strict size limitations. And there have to be, because if there's not, then under the, again, speaking to the current FCC rules, which are being looked at and may be changing here in the next several months, we would not have the ability to put any limit because ten percent more of what you have in place is essentially what's permitted. So that's one reason why there are some fairly stringent size limitations.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm coming-
The CBD does require stealth.
Okay. I'm just, I, I was reading this and, and paid attention as I was walking out of my office down in DC this morning and you look down K Street and every other building has about two dozen antennas bolted to the penthouse, at best painted the same color as the building.
Yeah.
And that's fifty-fifty. And it, I mean, it's, it's visually sort of jarring if you look up. And that would be my one concern, um, that we don't end up with that everywhere. Um, the other question I had is related to the section on staff approvals. And it goes back to what, what Lloyd was mentioning. I was thinking about the, the application we had a couple of months ago related to Crown, where we had a fairly in-depth discussion of architectural and architectural integration. And as I'm reading this, the, the staff approval limits top out at an antenna that's basically four foot six by two foot six, dimensionally. And I have no problem with, with staff approval and of, of antennas like this in general. My only concern is if it was a stealth facility, the evaluation of how well it integrates with the architecture and the ability to push back, you know, is there a provision here where, where staff can refer things to the Planning Commission or to a commission if they're not comfortable with it? I mean, I'm just thinking from the perspective of, um, if I was going to apply for one of these permits and it was two foot six by four foot six, and I was meeting with staff and got questions and pushed back on architectural integrations, I'd be inclined to say, you know, to possibly put staff in a, in a position where they'd have to maybe make a call on that.
Frank, you wanna comment on that?
I would say with any staff approval, we always have the authority to bring it to the commission.
Right.
Sure. There, again, there are the timelines to work with that can require fairly quick processes. On the other hand, I would think if we did have a situation like that, uh, and I would agree with, with, uh, with you that you, staff would certainly be able to do that. It's also possible that if there are that many concerns, it may fall outside the technicalities of, of what's your, because this is intended- Because this is intended to be fairly limited. But if they needed to allow that process, that they could certainly bring it to the planning commission for some further, for some further input, input, just to make sure they're not missing anything or-
Yeah, I mean, I-
Just have the right comfort level.
I, I understand, I understand very much all of the various timelines and the pressure to comply with federal regulations. And that's actually probably a little bit of the root of my concern, that something would get forced through quickly under a staff approval because you've got an applicant putting a lot of pressure on staff that, you know, I'm going to get my lawyers out, the FCC timeline's ticking, and you end up with a wart bolted to the side of a building somewhere where it's not ideal. I mean, I, I don't have any issue with this, you know, any concerns approving this as it's written. It's just that's, in reading it, that's the situation that I'm worried about. That's probably the only situation that I'm worried about out of here, is that pulling it out of the planning commissioner, out of Board of Appeals and doing a staff approval may, you know, take off some of the leverage to get stealth facilities properly integrated with building architecture.
Well, again, it is very limited and it essentially has to, for the staff to be approving it, it, it's going to have to meet the definitions and going to have to be effectively a stealth installation anyway.
I have enough confidence in the staff that if there was an architectural problem, that they would raise it and, and deal with it in a proper manner.
Though, though, we'll also be, when I say we, I mean by staff, we'll also have to be reporting on what has been approved and how the processes are, are moving along on a regular basis. And it's certainly possible as technologies change and as requests change over time, which is hard to foresee how it will change, but you know it will somehow. As that raises new issues, that then may be a time when we then put not only from here, but also from the, from the mayor and city council to say, okay, we're going to have to make some other changes. The other, the other thing I really didn't specify, but sometimes you assume it's in the background. But we have had outside counsel that Best, Best and Krieger, very well-versed in what's happening nationwide with the, with the FCC and with these installations, have given us some very substantial advice in going over all of this as well to make sure, do we meet the consistency standards? And also, are we in compliance with what the FCC is requiring? But at the same time, really focusing on maximum protection for, really for our community. Yes, we do want the facility, but at the same time, to address those concerns, the, the concerns that I think we share.
Yeah, I had two things. And, and I, thanks Phil for what you brought up. But it was kind of related to what I was thinking about too. But just to maybe split hairs, but you didn't, we, is, we didn't, we're not including the associated power supply in, in the definition here? Is there a reason why we're not doing that? We're saying satellite antennas, but the, a lot of these have those little power supply units as well. Do we, should we include that in, in this, in the definition? Or is there a reason that we don't need to do that?
Well, there are references to-
Yeah, I know, there are some references to power supply.
To power supply. And that there, we did have advice from outside counsel as to the approach to take on that. That will be something that certainly looked at if there were any comments on that issue. I'm not sure that there were.
Okay.
But because there were some concerns, what if there isn't a power supply available? What sort of battery can they have and all that? So that was built into part of what we were doing. I think part of it may have been not to emphasize it to some extent because at one point there was a question of what kind of power supply are we going to mandate? And that became part of the, part of the overall specific, fairly detailed requirements that the installations have to meet.
Okay. But I, I was, I was just thinking about the generic word, power supply. Like we have just satellite antenna here. So, I mean, I wasn't getting specific about it, but I think it should be, should be included in the definition. But, you know, okay. But the, and the other thing that I wanted to ask about was what about signal boosters? Because some of those, you know, some people in certain, you know, will have a signal booster on the back of their house or their deck because they're not getting a good signal in their house. And some of those can be pretty substantial too. Was there any discussion around those and, and how, you know, how we define those and, and regulate those as well?
This is for an, just an individual's own house, much like somebody putting up their own antenna.
Yeah, right.
I don't, I don't think there was a focus on that in part-
But that can get out of control too.
It can, it certainly, it certainly could and-
We have homeowner association-
Yeah.
You may in some cases, in some cases you don't.
A lot of, like, my neighborhood doesn't have one. We have a, you know, you know, citizens' association. You know, but we're, we're governed by the covenants of the city, you know, and the city ordinances. So that's why I'm bringing it up.
Right. The, the focus of this wasn't necessarily to limit what somebody does for their own usage.
Okay.
More dealing with wireless telecommunications, really-
The big stuff.
That are intended for the community that link in with the power system.
Okay. But I'm talking about why, you know, signal boosters for wireless communication. Because like in my basement, we get no signal. And lots of people don't get good signals when there's a lot of tree coverage, you know, and that kind of thing. And so more and more people are having-
I think the technology on that is advancing incredibly. I think that those receivers are getting smaller and better.
Is on, do you have any questions or any?
No, I think, you know, my one concern is the same as Phil echoed. I think that, but I do feel like there is the balance. And to echo what Lloyd mentioned, we do trust staff, as they have done before, to have a good handle on what is, requires architectural attention. I think, I can think, I'm not familiar with the Crown example, but I'm familiar with the example here in Diamond Avenue that we just reviewed about a month ago, where the corners had to be readjusted in order to accommodate for that, the, the, the new attachments that they were adding. So I think that situations like that are the ones that I find that it would require the, the planning commission to, you know, not required, but it would be good to have the opportunity to review those because of the right of way and because of the way that that impacts the visual quality of the street.
Yeah, that, and that one would still probably be here. I don't see this changing the size of that one. And the impact of that was, was much more significant than the, than what we're talking about here at least for staff approval.
Well, we have a recommendation before us. Do I have anybody making a motion on the recommendation if there's no further discussion?
Sure. Soon as I find it.
I'll race you.
Okay. I move that we recommend adoption of text amendment CTAM dash seven six six five dash two zero one seven to the mayor and city council.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? There's four zero on the vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a public, public agenda item for the, let's see. It's ASDP seven six four seven two thousand seventeen. It's a request for amendment to the schematic development plan for a property located at two eleven Rio Boulevard, formerly known as Macaroni Grill site. Please, Caroline?
Good evening. This is a public hearing on amendment to schematic development plan ASDP seven six four seven two thousand seventeen, submitted by Frank Carrera of Darden Corporation on June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. The applicant is requesting to demolish the existing seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five square foot Macaroni Grill building to construct a new eight thousand seventy-eight square foot building for a yardhouse restaurant. Subject property is located at two eleven Rio Boulevard in the Washingtonian Center and is owned MXD. In nineteen ninety-seven, the property was approved for a restaurant site as part of a broader schematic development plan SDP dash W two for a twenty-two point nine acre portion of the Washingtonian Center, which is essentially everything north of Washingtonian Boulevard on this aerial. That's the entire twenty-two point nine acres. Schematic development plan SDP W two was later amended in nineteen ninety-eight and currently is approved for four hundred and sixty thousand square feet of retail and restaurant use. The final site plan W one 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 two was approved for the Macaroni Grill in nineteen ninety-eight. This aerial just shows you a closer version of that, of Washingtonian Boulevard to the south, Rio Boulevard to the west, and then the Washingtonian Lake to the northeast of the site. This application comes before the planning commission as a public hearing pursuant to section twenty-four dash one ninety-eight C of the city code. Following the courtesy review that was presented to the mayor and city council on October sixteenth, the council directed staff to have the amendment referred to the planning commission for public hearing and final action. The hearing was duly advertised in the October twenty-sixth and November second issues of the Washington Post, and the property was properly posted. At the present time, there are thirty-two exhibits in the record file, and all exhibits, exhibits are referenced in the exhibit list. All of the individual exhibits may be reviewed during the course of the meeting on the city's webpage or at the Planning and Code Administration office during regular business hours. Any objections to any exhibits should be noted prior to the closing of the record. Otherwise, they will be deemed received in evidence. Here tonight to present the application and to answer any questions is Jack DeGagne of Darden and Nick Speech is here of Bowler Engineering. And I will turn it over to them.
Good evening. I am Jack DeGagne with, with Darden, representing the yardhouse tonight from Orlando, Florida, from the corporate office. Just very excited about, to be here. As Carolyn explained, we're, we're basically picking up an existing Matt Grill. This closed, and we're going to basically put a brand-new yardhouse right back in the same spot. So it's just unplug and plug back in. They're approximately the, the, the same size. A yardhouse, just to explain that a little bit, it's a, one of our, under Dardner's Eight Concepts, under the Darden umbrella. This is one of our, I'll say, we've had them for about five years. Don't quote me on how many years, but it's an excellent concept with a variety of food. I'll say, architecture-wise, modern, modern architecture. As far as the term, I probably had, modern contemporary. I think that's the best way to explain it. It is four-sided architecture. The, the key here, though, is in reference to our, our building. And I went out there today. There's a beautiful pedestrian corridor with the lake in. And there was a lot of folks out there today. And I was walking around, it was a nice day, thank you for your weather. One thing I noticed with the existing Matt Grill is when I'm on the pedestrian corridor and I'm walking up there, there's the building, there was no connection. And that is, that's the key here, is, is the connection. So associated with the yardhouse, we do have an outdoor patio area. Part of it will be covered, part of it will be uncovered. It, it'll, but it, from what I've, I've been told and when I asked, it's used year-round or pretty much, it's a lot of months of the year. And so that connection point, that vibrancy, that is what we're looking to do. And so when you're on that pedestrian corridor, we're gonna, we're gonna invite you with the, just with the excitement, seeing people up there eating and just relaxing. So that is a big piece of this, is the, is the patio as part of, of the restaurant. The patio does sit, I know there's probably been discussion, right now it sits over the WSSC easement. And we are, we've been working with an agreement with WSSC. It's almost complete, not quite, but we've, you know, submitted an agreement. It went back and forth with exhibits. We revised the exhibits, went back, and we're, we're right there. The exhibits were, were verbally approved to go along with the contract. So right now, we're just that close. But I just wanted you to know that we have been in constant communication with WSSC in reference to this. And Nicholas here could speak more about it if need be. In reference to the, with the patio area, and then as far as with landscape, being that we're just plugging back in, we will enhance the existing landscape as far as around the building. Our scope of work is, is minimal in the sense that it is basically just the, the area in, in, kind of outlined in green. The parking area is, is staying the same. The only thing we're going to be doing, of course, is confirming ADA compliance. But the, the parking lot, we're, we're basically not touching. Nicholas could speak more on that if you had any questions. We will enhance the landscape, stormwater. We're going to improve, you know, as far as with the stormwater on the facility in reference to our, our, our design. And Nicholas can always speak a little bit about that. Again, as you can see there, we do, there will be access from the patio to the pedestrian. So you can, you can come up and get in from, from the pedestrian access around the lake. I'd like to go to maybe the building elevations. Contemporary, modern, that, that's a great term. The key is, is four-sided architecture. It's the use of stone, stone, metal, and, let's see, what have I put? And tile. There's two different types of, you've got the porcelain tile, you've got aluminum, just a nice mixture. The key thing is that when you look at the elevations, you'll notice we've changed the roof heights. And a lot of that has to do with the architecture inside because we have high ceilings inside, a lot of exposed beams, warm wood accents. And so by the creation of the different roof heights, we're able to create a very nice architectural look outside. And then on the inside, you get that, that same feeling. There's also, let's, yeah, right there, there's a, on this particular one, on the materials board, and I brought one here for touch, you know, to be able to touch. Here we've got a welded wire mesh that I'm showing right here. It's a, I believe it's, it's stainless, stainless steel.
Can you hold it up this way so the camera can see it? Just, just, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The welded, and that's, if you look on this particular one where you see the, you kind of see it, it looks like kind of a screen. And see, and that's the idea is on the rear, this is the rear of, of our restaurant, yet we've incorporated it into the four-sided architecture. And by the use of that screen, it's, it, it, it pops, it accents, and it creates that four-sided feeling as far as an architecture.
So is there something behind that?
Uh, yes, there are. Whoops.
Oops.
In that particular, yeah, there is, as far as in the service area behind that. So not sure of all the components, but I do know-
Is it some sort of screen?
It's a-
Yeah, take that off.
May I come up there?
Well, if you hold it, we need to have you on the camera pointing and telling people so that we can see it.
Okay, well, it's just a, they, they, you call it a screen, but it's just, but the opening is, it's not like a, like a tiny screen. But it is, it's a screen in the sense when you look at it from a distance. But each opening, as you can see, is much bigger than you think, like a screen porch.
And that's what, I mean, because I'm looking at it on your rendering, and that's why I asked that question. But okay, thanks for that explanation.
Right, right. So that's, this is just the, the material that's going to use to create that look.
Is, is that a typical material that you guys have used on other yardhouse restaurants? Or is that a unique, is this one of the first times you're using it?
It's, right now, it's strictly on the yardhouse. This is a-
No, I, I mean, on, on the other yardhouse restaurant. Here's, here's why I'm asking. The, we've used, I've used wire meshes like that for similar things on projects all the time, and they work really well. The key with them is how dense they are and how tight the wire mesh is so that it's transparent but not too transparent, so that in- so that in daylight, it looks, it, it still provides screening. What you held up there, for the, for as much of it as here on these renderings, my only concern with that is that it's, it's wide enough that during the daytime, you're not gonna get much screening. I was just Googling around at other yardhouse restaurants that popped up to see if any of them, you know, if there was an example, a photo of that installed somewhere on your restaurant.
I do know, I, I know that we're using that, uh, we've got one, yeah, outside of, uh, Chicago that's under construction where we're using this. This has, it's, it is being used now as far as on other projects. As far as, I, I couldn't quote the exact, uh, one in existence that's open, but I'm pretty sure that there, there probably are a few, 'cause this is a, a material that they have been using for a while.
Yeah, I just, that's a key. While that facade and that, the image that's on the screen there right now isn't, you know, doesn't have a lot of branding on it. It's where your service entrance doors are. As you're walking around Rio, as you're walking up, uh, Rio Boulevard, I think it is, that's a pretty key facade. And so, as it's rendered on the elevations, I think it looks great. My only concern is that, in reality, it's gonna show up being much more transparent than it actually is, and you're gonna see whatever equipment, whatever stuff is behind there is gonna show up. So, that's my only reaction caution, is that I think the screen is fine. It just, we need to make sure it actually screens things and isn't too transparent.
Okay, duly noted, and I, I'll get, I'll be glad to get some, uh, actual pictures if need be, and, uh, but, uh.
Well, certainly, we can work at that. Final site plan.
But I know we're an SDP, so we're not really getting into the.
You'll see it again. You'll see it. But it's good to get that comment.
So they can be prepared when they come back.
Please, go ahead, proceed if you have.
I think, uh, that's, um, uh, pretty much what I wanted to, uh, kinda touch base on was the four-sided architecture, the, the use of materials and the heights. Um, thank you. Be glad to address any comments that you, or, or questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Can, can you talk just a little bit, maybe, and, and Trudy will correct me if I'm wrong, but can we talk a little bit about the pier?
You mean the pilings?
The pilings, yeah.
It's over the water, is it?
Yeah, it's over the water, right?
No.
No?
No.
What is it?
Out here?
It's the first, the, the first.
It's on the east elevation. Yeah, it's on the east elevation.
The, the, the topography goes down, and then you have the, um, the walkway, so it just.
Oh, it's not, so it's not then, okay.
What you're seeing is probably the, the treatment that they're going to have underneath the, uh, the patio.
That's correct. The, the idea is that the pathway around the lake will stay as is. Will be just behind that. Underneath those piers will be screened with landscaping, so you won't be able to see underneath. But in some of the workings with WSSC, they need to be able to get under there.
To get, right, to service whatever.
So, the idea is, it's completely on land.
That's kinda what I was getting.
Yeah, thank you.
Does the, uh, eight thousand seventy-eight square feet, uh, of the restaurant include in the footprint the patio? Or is that separate from the, uh, the actual restaurant?
The patio is separate.
That is separate, okay. Do you have any idea how large that patio is? What the dimensions are on the patio?
It's, um.
And has that, uh, conform right now with the current patio that exists along Macaroni Grill? I mean, is that area similar? There was a little outside there, remember on the side by the parking lot facing the parking lot?
On one side of the building.
Oh, it's a patio there.
But not on, not on the lakeside.
Right, that's the difference between this building and the old building.
Right.
Significant difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, and there's some steps down, yeah.
Well, if you could just let staff know, and I just, just out of curiosity.
I don't have the exact numbers, uh, in reference to that, but I do know that it's, it's a separate number.
Okay.
There's, uh, you know, approximately, um, a hundred and fourteen seats on, on the patio, just as approximate.
Okay. And the other thing is, uh, I'm glad to see that, uh, the parking's not gonna be, uh, in any way obliterated or, uh, restructured. I mean, we've got, I think you've got an excess of three hundred spaces at this moment for that restaurant. So, just to let, let the public know that there will be sufficient parking, even though on a Saturday or Sunday, it's impossible to find parking, which is a good thing, because at least the parking lot's being used. Uh, but that has been a problem in the past, that, uh, it, it's been very difficult to maneuver in that parking lot, uh, when it's very busy. So, uh, just as a note to that now, there's also a restaurant that is closed currently, and that was Joe's Crab Shack, I believe. Uh, just out of curiosity, are we getting any kind of, uh, hits on that, just, uh, to see how that's?
We haven't heard anything.
Nothing, okay. I just, quick question I had. Anybody else want to, any questions about anything?
Well, I, I think it's, um, it's a fantastic proposal. I wonder if, um, just for personal curiosity, if you consider an adaptive reuse of the current, um, structure?
The current structure?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that we're gonna, we're gonna knock it down, so.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
That's the point of our question.
If you consider.
Oh, did we consider?
An adaptive reuse of the, of the structure.
I, you know, as far as, uh, quite honestly, our, our concept, we want, you know, of course, we, we want a new building, and, um, it, it, it was too, I think it's too far of a departure to be able to get what we want as far as with that, that feeling, uh, so.
They, they looked at it early on. There was a lot of discussion as to whether they were gonna do that.
Discussion, but.
Okay, I, it just, uh, I happen to know a lot of, of the, um, environmental aspects of demolition, so I just wanted to know if that was taken into consideration at some point.
Yes.
Yeah.
I will let you know in reference to the demolition, I would be, uh, I'll be, you know, submitting for that, uh, and we will stay in compliance environmentally, any way possible, to make that as small of a disturbance as possible.
And with respect to the, the new building, uh, is there any attempt to go with LEED certification on the building at all? Or what, what are the, any environmental, um, uh, attributes to the building that we can?
That's under, I, I will say that's under discussion right now between the building depart, I had a meeting earlier today with the building department, and so, right now that I, uh, and I'm not an expert on, as far as on, on, on LEED. My background is more civil and landscape architecture, but I do know that there was a discussion on that today between the architect and the, uh, the building official. So, uh, there's, I'm not sure where that's gonna end up.
We'd like to encourage as much as possible.
It is, it is, uh, a smaller square footage than what the city code requires LEED, but they will have to comply with the energy code. And that's, that is a big step, um, and actually goes above and beyond some of the LEED requirements.
Yeah, excellent.
Well, as long as it encourages sustainability, I think that.
That's the important.
Right.
Uh, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to.
I did, um, was Nick going to?
I'm just here to answer questions.
He just, he just holds it up the.
I'm the personal eagle.
Anybody in the audience who'd like to comment on this, uh, please step forward. If not, uh, then, can you please, Carolyn, sum it up?
Sure, I, I just wanted to add that, um, just so it's on the record, that the reason that this is here before you as an amendment to the schematic development plan, even though it's a restaurant replacing a restaurant, is, um, related to the change in height of the building that kicked in a requirement that there be an amendment to, to SDP rather than just a, um, final site plan for review. Um, but, uh, given that, uh, it is what we would consider a minor amendment to the SDP, we are of the opinion that, uh, the planning commission could close the record and take final action on this ASDP this evening. Uh, and then the applicant would then return to the planning commission for a final site plan review, hopefully in early twenty eighteen. Uh, so staff recommends that the planning commission close the record for application ASDP seven six four seven, twenty seventeen, and proceed with final action. And, uh, staff also recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, approve amendment to schematic to plant, schematic development plan ASDP seven six four seven, twenty seventeen, and adopt the resolution with the one condition, uh, related to the, um, WSSC easement.
Any further discussion?
Just, uh, a statement to the point about the height increase. Um, my, my first reaction, just looking at, looking through the narrow lens at this project was, you know, oh my God, it's almost twice in some locations the height of the existing building. But, you know, and sitting here, you know, spinning around Google Street View a little bit, when you broaden your lens and look at the context of what's around it, it's absolutely within, it's absolutely appropriate.
I think it would bring a really good, um, uh, it, it would enclose the, um, the, the walkway, and it would provide a really nice, um, height and, um, put, um, ratio to the, um, to the scale of the walkway.
Absolutely, and, and as you come around the roundabout, the view, the traffic view there, Macaroni Grill sort of hides behind the trees a little bit, so I, I mean, I think it's absolutely no concern with the height.
Yeah, I think it looks good.
Yeah.
Can, can I just ask a quick question? So, so, is it Yard Bird are we talking about?
Yard House.
Yard House.
No, what, what kind of food? Yard Bird.
It's a, um, um, a very wide variety, uh, a menu. Um, uh, you know, as far as with, uh, steaks and, you know, and, and chicken and fish and, um, and sandwiches, and, and here's the thing that, uh, a very wide variety, I haven't gotten through it yet, uh, you know, as far as, I've got two grandsons. One is a meat eater. The other is a vegan. And we, so, trying to find a restaurant is difficult for the family. We went there because they've got, I think, ten or eleven vegetarian or vegan dishes on the menu that are good. And so, the, the, a very wide selection, uh, on that. It's also, as far as, uh, in reference to the yardhouse, there are, uh, the, the craft beers, over one hundred, uh, craft beers, uh, as on the selection that you can see, uh, there. So, it's a, um, you know, an excellent, excellent, uh.
Good, sounds like it's gonna be a good addition to, to the city.
If, no further discussion, do I have a recommendation? Motion, please?
Yes. Mister Chairman, I move that the planning commission close our record for application ASDP dash seven six four seven dash two zero one seven and proceed with final action.
Second?
Uh, is that the complete motion?
Well, well, let's do it separately.
Two separate motions?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Let the record show four zero. And the second?
Mister Chairman, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP dash seven six four seven dash two zero one seven, and adopt the resolution with the one condition. Did, did you read it in?
I did not read it in.
Okay, that's what I said.
But it's in, it's already in the.
We've discussed it.
Okay, yeah, we discussed it, but, and I had to look up Hold Harmless. I don't think I've ever seen that before, so it's that. I learned something, and I thank you very much, in the, the one condition here.
We have a second, please.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? Let the record show four zero, the vote. Thank you very much, and we do.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Very much so. Uh, next on our agenda is from the commission, uh, Phil?
I don't have a hand, excuse me.
Okay, so. So, I, uh, I attended the, and here's my little pen here, my, the Maryland Planning Commission Association's Fall Conference, and we had a special guest at the Fall Conference. Our very own Frank Johnson was there, and I took a picture of him in action, and he, he did the, um, open meetings training, and he did an excellent job. It was a total, I mean, it was literally standing room only. There were lots of people in there. People had to leave. Some of the, some of the, the staff that were, you know, who, who put the, the program together had to leave to give people a chance to sit down. There were, it was a lot of interest in that discussion, and Frank did an excellent job. Thank you very much. Um, and then there was this, this, um, a discussion about, so, the, so, the, um, Supreme Court decision on sign ordinance, isn't it? I, I, we, we need to, to step back and look at that, Frank, as to how it might impact our own ordinance here in the city. So, I, I need to probably talk to you about that.
We actually have been, and actually.
Oh, okay, okay.
Staff have been, uh, I mean, we actually do have.
We have a webinar tomorrow.
Oh, good.
Webinar tomorrow.
So, you, okay, we, we, you didn't have to speak then. Good.
Part of, part of the concern with that decision was, uh, the, some of the initial drafts that were coming out were either saying, oh, there's no impact, which is not true if you read the decision.
Yeah.
Um, or saying it's so extreme, you can't have any restrictions at all.
Right, exactly.
And it was one of, you know, it was a Supreme Court decision where you have almost three minority positions, and you have to kind of, it was actually the Alito concurrence that has a lot of the detail that, because it almost seemed like Justice Alito was saying, look, here's what you can do with this. Laying out, okay, you're, you're not gonna be able to categorize in the same way, but if you have consistent rules and restrictions in terms of, uh, size and all that, you can do it. So, that's part of what, um, uh.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of back and forth in the work. I was, I facilitated that discussion.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I did, so it was like, whoa.
It is on, it is on our work plan for, um, this year. I'm not sure we'll get to it, but it's on our work plan.
And, yeah, just, yeah, I was, I was voted, um, elected the vice president, and I couldn't shake the secretary role. So, I'm the vice president and secretary, so.
Wow.
So.
They know when they're gonna suck her. Great, let's go. Fuzali?
Nothing from it.
I, I just want to add, um, it's the fall, and there's the leaf collection going on that goes on by the city. I mean, Public Works has been doing a great job. They come by in the Kentlands, I know, on Thursday, all-day Thursday, raking up the leaves on the sidewalks and the, uh, and the curbs. And for anybody who's got a problem with the leaves, put them out the curb. The city will take care of it. It's a great service that the city provides, and, um, you don't have to burn anything, and it's, it's environmentally safe. And, uh, just take advantage of it. And again, the city does a wonderful job with that, so that's, that's mine. Greg, first, anything?
Um, just a reminder, there's a joint public hearing November twentieth, and that's on the affordable, um, housing regulations. Um, I believe Maryam's polled you all, um, but if you have not responded back to her, if you wouldn't mind.
If you could let us know tonight, it would be great.
Yes. Um, and then, our next meeting, and last meeting of the year is December sixth. Wow.
Yay. That's amazing. Trudy?
I want to wish you happy GIS week. Four members of our staff participated in a, um, education, um, seminars with the second graders at Gaithersburg Elementary School, teaching them about maps and mapping out where their Thanksgiving dinner comes from. And, uh, we also, uh, had a seminar today, and we saw many uses of GIS, um, that is utilized in the city. We have over seven hundred layers in our GIS system, and, uh, we are mapping lots of things, and it really, it's been an amazing, um, journey coming from doing zipitone and, um, Mylar overlays to, to what we have now.
Frank, anything? No, but thank you. Okay, uh, if nobody else has anything else to add, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I move.
Second?
Second.
Great.
Third.
Adjourned. Thank you very much.